Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Thursday, February 23 regular business meeting of Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors. Let's please begin with a flag slip.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
President Ushka.
President.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
And Director Viall.
Here.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
I move adoption of the agenda for this evening.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Five oh. Number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Tacoma Art Museum.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Scott-Thomas with the Department of Community Partnership for Tacoma Public Schools. Good evening Superintendent Santorino, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, President Ushka, and board members and community. It's my pleasure to talk about the Gold Star Community Partner presented this evening. I'll give you a little bit of background as I do every time. Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, school, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to students' success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. Under your consideration is the Tacoma Art Museum. They've been an asset to the Tacoma community since they opened their doors in 1935. They're celebrating 80 years. The Tacoma Art Museum is an anchor in the city's downtown urban landscape and gathering place for connecting people through art via thoughtful exhibitions, exciting events, and enriching programs. The museum's collection of more than 4,500 works emphasizes the arts and artists and artists of the Northwest and the broader Western region. Every day Tacoma Art Museum works to be a national model for regional museums by creating a dynamic museum that engages, inspires, and builds community through art. Tacoma Art Museum opened the award-winning Thirty Americans exhibit in September 2016 which featured African-American contemporary artists from across the United States. This exhibit highlighted the important and critical topics in contemporary America including race, history, and gender. Prior to the opening of the exhibit Samantha Kelly, Director of Education for the Tacoma Art Museum, reached out to Tacoma Public Schools to engage with the teaching and learning team about marketing the exhibit for secondary students. Not only has Tacoma Art Museum helped to create a critical community partnership, but they've also requested the district's input on the hiring of their new leadership position for school and teacher programs. They've also requested, since Madeline LePaire was hired, her enthusiasm for a stronger partnership with the district has flourished into quarterly meetings with the teaching and learning team focused on student engagement. Tacoma Art Museum shares the district's interest in ensuring exhibits and tours are aligned to the Washington State academic standards, and this work is an outcome of our partnership and ongoing communication focused on providing high-quality instruction to every student every day. Tacoma Art Museum's legacy of 80 years in this community is a statement to the importance of art in the community. The district's honored to work with the Tacoma Art Museum, and they've demonstrated their dedication as a partner and asset to the community through engaging students and families through the arts. So it is our recommendation, the Community Partner Office recommends that the Board of Director recognizes Tacoma Art Museum as being awarded the Gold Star Community Partner. And to accept the award from the Tacoma Art Museum, I'm going to ask Madeline LePaire to come forward, please. Can we give her a hand?[295.02][295.02](applause)
Thank you so much. My name is Madeline LePaire. I'm the educator for school and teacher programs at the Tacoma Art Museum. Our Director of Education Samantha Kelly apologizes that she can't be here with us, but she shares her thanks from sunny Florida. We greatly value our partnership with Tacoma Public Schools. TAM's mission is connecting people through art, and our collaboration with TPS helps us to live that mission. We're proud of the work that we're doing together to promote student academic success and empower the whole child. This partnership provides avenues for students to take part in TAM's programs such as guided school tours, art after-school, and teen art council. Working with TPS, TAM is able to serve more students and make more direct links to the classroom. At TAM, we believe it's our civic duty to ensure youth in our community have access to arts education to build strong and vibrant futures for themselves and for Tacoma. We applaud TPS for recognizing and championing the value of art, and we are committed to serving Tacoma Public Schools, its teachers, students, and their families, and we're excited about how our partnership can grow into the future. Thank you so much.[383.66][383.66](applause)
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.[386.66][386.66](inaudible)
The next item on our agenda is members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation, and your umphed is very much appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes to share your comments. You'll get a warning after two minutes, and you'll get another warning at, I believe, 30 seconds. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then you'll have your three minutes up. So.
First speaker, Jocelyn Bray from SOTA.
Hello. My name is Jocelyn Bray. I'm a freshman at the Tacoma School of Arts. In January, I chose to take a class on teen sex trafficking, and I was really upset that no one else in the class knew anything about sex trafficking in general, let alone the issue here in Tacoma. Minor sex trafficking is recruitment, harboring, transportation, perversion, or obtaining a person for the purpose of a commercial sex act, in which a commercial sex act is induced by force, fraud, or coercion, or in which the person induced to perform such an act has not attained 18 years of age. Sex trafficking affects thousands of minors in the United States. Approximately 325,000 American youth are at risk for sexual exploitation, and roughly 200,000 incidents of sexual exploitation of minors occur each year in the U.S. In Tacoma, Carlinne Jamson of Rebuilding Hope stated that gangs are no longer selling drugs and weapons, instead they are selling the bodies of our children. Facts, one out of eight minors are victims of sex trafficking. Roughly 30,000 students attend Tacoma Public Schools, meaning 6,700 students are potential victims of this crime, and I am worried about my fellow students all over the district. How can you guys help? Where better to learn how to prevent and report sex trafficking than in our schools? We learn long division and square roots, but we do not know how to prevent ourselves from being victimized. We do not know how to report human trafficking, and we do not know how to help our friends. Currently Tacoma Public School requires all staff to take over 2.5 hours of Safe Schools training. Included in the training library is an optional 21-minute training class called Human Trafficking Awareness. This valuable resource is underused because it is not mandatory training for all staff. Making the training mandatory is vital for the safety of Tacoma. All students, as students, we are taught to use our inside voices, but not taught in the classroom to use our voices when we feel threatened. It's been found that youth victims of sex trafficking do not graduate from high school. Educating all Tacoma students about the tactics and manipulation used by traffickers in Tacoma will lead to a better future. Education starts with our teacher. Making human trafficking awareness training mandatory for all students is important for the safety of Tacoma. And I respectfully request the human trafficking awareness becomes part of the required safe training schools. You can't save the whole world, but we can save our students.[588.66][588.66](applause)
Tasha Tunch.
All right, good evening. I'm here representing the parents and students of Stafford Elementary School and all the board members. We respectfully come to you today to express our concern and frustration in regards to a constant problem of flooding on our track and field. As we all know, we live in an area that is known for consistent rain of sometimes more than five to nine months of the year, and with a constant flow of rain comes the flooding of our field, which lasts several days after the rain has stopped. It is already sad enough that our children have to run on a concrete track to run on a soggy field, and having to turn around because of a flooded track is a horrible blow to our students' and teachers' morale, voicing our concern. We parents have voiced our concern to our physical education teachers, our primary teachers, and to the retired former and current principal of our school, and we know that they have expressed their concerns to the district. Our children come home with mud-filled uniforms even when there's no rain, and this is due to the standing water left on the field from days before. We want our children to enjoy their time outside and have a place to release that excess energy, but not at the expense of having to buy extra uniforms, socks, and shoes unnecessarily so. It is so sad that even when the track team has practiced, mud has gotten into the students' hair, and mine also because I practice with the kids. I don't just stand around. This is a shame and a knock to our students' self-esteem, for they want to be proud of their school in every way. What we would like to see, in the long term, we would like to see the school with a better track and field, a small two-lane, all-weather-running track and field. In the short term, there could be a piping structure consisting of simple piping that leads the stormwater away from the track into the drainage systems. And I've also brought pictures of how the field is, like on the rainy days, the kids, they come, and then they have to come to like a flooded part, and they have to turn around and walk around, and then turn around, and it just looks so sad, and even the field, the field itself is so soggy that the boots that I had on, it almost covered half of my foot. And it's like, there's like a drainage, like a small hill at the southern part of the field, and it's just a big, huge, it's just a huge mess. So, thank you.
Thank you.[732.62][732.62](applause)
Could you give your number to Mr. Mayor Kami so that we can at least get back to give you a contact? Next speaker is Janet Stewart, PTA, Tacoma Council PTA.
Good evening. I'm Janet Stewart with Tacoma Council PTA, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and also thank you for the years of support you guys have shown PTAs in Tacoma. I'm speaking on the top five legislative priorities for 2017 from Washington State PTA. Washington State PTA creates legislative prioritizing, excuse me, legislative prioritizing, utilizing a representative process which includes 132,000 members across the state to promote policies that support our vision, which is that every child's potential becomes a reality. The legislative priorities, I provided for you a copy, and also it can be found on the state PTA website, wasstatepta.org. Back in October, we set our legislative priorities. Members of the state PTA met from all over the state in Olympia, and this was what we've come up with. Our top five priorities: social-emotional learning, amply fund basic education, closing the opportunity gap, standards for paraeducators, and breakfast after the bell. And I'll break those down just a little bit, but I'll do it quickly because I know I don't have much time. Social-emotional learning, prioritize school climate through strong and social and emotional learning supports to maximize learning opportunities that help Washington students succeed in school and in life. And there's some Senate and House bills out regarding that right now. Also, amply fund basic education, which is not only our priority, but your guys' too. There's definitely a lot of talk on that, and we would definitely want to support the McCleary decision and also support the whole child. So, we're not looking at taking all the education money for ourselves and leaving, ignoring the whole child. Ooh, closing the opportunity gap, I think we all know what that's about. We want to continue to enforce the 2016 House Bill 1541 to close the educational opportunity gap. Standards for paraeducators, we would like statewide standards, training, and career development for paraeducators, minimum employment standards, and training for teachers who have paraeducators. And then breakfast after the bell. We had a member of our state PTA testify this week in favor of House Bill 1508, breakfast after the bell. And then real quickly, we have some other supported issues: improve educational outcomes for foster children, engaging family in student success, post-secondary higher education access and affordability, removing barriers to implementing ECAP, and restorative justice and school safety. And thank you. Tacoma Council PTA is now 106 years old, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you.[937.00][937.00](applause)
I'm sorry, I'm going to mispronounce the next name. I didn't have a chance to talk to you, but this is a citizen from Crescent Heights regarding the decision of changing the sale location. It looks like Rindin is the first name?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please come.
I know it's pretty hard.[963.23][963.23](laughing)
Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity. One of the multiple families in North City Tacoma right now has a concern, and I really appreciate the opportunity to express a concern that we got a letter that the highly capable program, which called Sales, will be canceled and move out from our own local community and change to another location this year. So, this is a program for highly capable students. As most people may know, there's a Washington State law that a highly capable program for some of the students, it's actually basic education for them. So, we actually, right now, is not fighting for any extra education opportunity, we're actually fighting for their basic education. Right now, the current location is in Bronze Point, and it's about 20 minutes bus ride. The new location will be in elementary school, which is across town, and about 60-minute bus drive ride one way. So, it's about two-hour ride for those 3, 2, 5 grade student. So, it will have significant impact, negative impact on those students physically, psychologically, and socially, because they cannot really make any friend, they have to be exhausted with all this long drive. And so, we really hope you can consider the decision to move this one out of our local community. It will actually really affect the principle of the education such as diversity, or equal opportunity, or, you know, access for the student. I know those people, most people say, "Oh, those persons are just smart, and they are just ask for extra." No, they are actually unique, because they just need a different education style to give them the fair education share. So, we really hope you guys could help us to reach that. Don't just buy us that, "Hey, you know, those parents or those students, they are just naughty," or, you know, "Ask for extra." They are just a different group of students, just because they are little different, maybe advanced or behind, but they have their own right for their own equal share for the education. Moving to another totally different community with like a two-hour ride, bus ride every day, that's just too hard for all the little ones. They are only like eight years old or to 10 years old. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to beg you guys and all the people support us to keep this program in our local school, and all others consider alternative, we are not even given any other alternative source for those group of students. Thank you so much.[1150.01][1150.01](applause)
We have four speakers regarding the elementary all-city track meet. Number one, Gail Johnson, followed by Kurt Chevalier, followed by Craig Christensen, followed by Teresa Waitert, and they established their order. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, school board and superintendent, for this opportunity. My name's Gail Johnson. I teach elementary PE at DeLong Elementary. This is my 41st year with the district. I've been involved with helping coordinate and organize our Tacoma Elementary City Track Meet. Depending on the state track meet dates and the school calendar, we only have one or two Saturdays in which to run our event. The event has always been held on the first Saturday in June. We have never changed our date. We were set up on a rotation basis with middle schools alternating between Mount Tohoma and Lincoln High Schools every year. The scheduling of the facility has always been done by the athletic department on their master calendar. Imagine our dismay when we discovered that the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life was being prioritized over our elementary Tacoma School District program as they were giving our Saturday date and facility. School District Policy 4260, the use of school district facilities, states the buildings, grounds, and facilities of Tacoma School District Number 10 are primary to serve the educational needs of the students of the Tacoma District. No other use shall be permitted to interfere with this purpose. The Tacoma Elementary All-City Track Meet is an educational culminating activity for our students. Some of the 5th graders use this also as part of their state-mandated CPS test for PE. We met with the athletic department last month to ask for some clarification, and they were basically told that Relay for Life was now part of our rotation cycle because some of the students from Tacoma might be participating in the Relay for Life. Relay for Life is certainly a great cause, however, they are not a school district program and should not take away or deny my students the opportunity to participate at our best facility. There are a couple of easy solutions, but the simplest solution, our track meet needs to happen on a Saturday. It lasts for over six hours. Relay for Life dates occurred in Tacoma from May to July. Let Relay for Life happen after the school year ends. Reserve the first two Saturdays in June for our students. Relay for Life should be grateful to use our facilities at no charge whenever they can obtain their use. Relay for Life should not be in any kind of rotation cycle with our program. The elementary PE teachers have coached their teams, and they also have to run all the events at the meet. We do not receive a coaching stipend like middle school or high school. We do not receive meet officials to run the meet. Most of them are volunteering their time for our students. I think our students and staff should be shown more consideration. I would like the school board to look at and interpret the Tacoma School District 4260, the use of facilities, because I believe our students and elementary PE program are being denied our facilities to an outside agency. Finally, if our meet does take place, I would like to invite you, the school board, and various district directors, elementary principals, to come out on that Saturday and support our kids. Okay? Our school calendar says Tacoma Kids have it. It lists Sammy Ivy Theater. I wish it could say Tacoma Kids have the opportunity to participate at our best facility, and the state's best facility. Let's put our Tacoma Kids first.[1354.01][1354.01](applause)
Good evening, board members and superintendent. My name is Kurt Chevalier, and I've been teaching in this district since 1990. Currently, I'm at Whitman Elementary. I'm here also to address the issue of the all-city elementary track meet being displaced by the Relay for Life. The crux of the issue is that 400-plus Tacoma School District students are being bumped out of using a Tacoma School District facility in favor of an outside organization which is in contradiction to the Tacoma School District Policies 4260 and 4260R, which govern the use of school facilities. It's the second time in three years that this is happening. The precedent being set through this failure to follow, our district policy is a detriment to the students, who are supposed to be yours and my highest priority. You, the members of the board, and the superintendent have the opportunity to do the right thing, even if it is the harder option. It would be challenging and uncomfortable for the district to tell the American Cancer Society that the Relay for Life dates need to be rescheduled, but it would be the right choice for our students. Soon enough, it will be time again for the district to ask the citizens to support a school levy or bond to fund school construction and facilities improvements. The district will ask staff, such as myself and others, to help get the message out to vote for the levy. In good conscience, I cannot do that, knowing that the district is trying to get citizens to help pay for school improvements that are supposedly for the district's benefit, yet those students will be denied the use of those improved facilities if the district has a chance to give away the facility for a PR event, or in the case of 2015, the US Open for a profit. If the district chooses not to correct the Relay for Life date, I ask that on behalf of my fellow colleagues that we are provided some clarifying guidance pertaining to the adherence of district policies and regulations. Please tell us which policies and regulations we have to follow and which we can ignore. We're looking for solutions for our students, and we're willing to meet with anybody, any time, to provide more details than these three minutes can allow. Thank you.[1481.61][1481.61](applause)
My name is Craig Christensen. I'm the elementary PE teacher at Sherman, and I've been there for teaching for 31 years in Tacoma. I am a blessed person to be able to do something I truly enjoy for all those years. We've been able to do something very special in our school district over those years. These people behind me are people that we've worked together to do a lot of really wonderful things for the kids of our school district. So, it's pretty sad for a group of elementary PE teachers to have to come to a school board meeting to be able to fight for facilities that were built for our students. It's troubling to have an athletic director who is unable to figure out the priority list that governs our facilities. It is equally troubling when they're able to make a statement that says Relay for Life can truly only be held at Mount Tohoma. I wish that person would have said surely our district track programs can truly only be held at Mount Tohoma. What is hard to believe also is our leadership has agreed that Relay for Life is important, more important than our district students and programs. I've had emails with her. She has told me, "What is wrong with Lincoln?" That isn't even the question. It has to do with the priority of things. I wish she would have said, "Please use Mount Tohoma." We asked Tacoma taxpayers to spend millions of dollars to build a state-of-the-art track facility, and our number-one priority is our Tacoma students and programs. I surely hope that we didn't build this thing to lure WIAA so we can have Star Trek back at Tacoma. I hope we did this for our students. You, the school board, received an email from me on Sunday, December 11 of last year. I explained much of what you are hearing here tonight. The following day, I received an email from our Director of Student Life. She wanted to work things out. We met, and a couple of these gentlemen were with us, and it was that it was very clear that she does not use Policy 4260 in her decision-making. Her feeling was anyone or any organization has the right to bump any Tacoma school programs if she so chooses. How can there be such a lack of respect for all the work that we have done in getting 25 schools with 400-plus students and their physical education teachers for an all-city track meet? This administration is going to kill a long-held program unless you are willing to stop what is happening. We are ready to meet with the school board anytime you want. You just need to let us know.[1638.01][1638.01](applause)
Good evening. My name is Teresa Waitert. I'm the PE teacher at Stafford Elementary School. A year ago spring, I had 50 Stafford 4th and 5th graders participate in my after-school track and field program for eight weeks. All 50 kids then went to the all-city elementary track and field meet at Mount Tohoma High School that takes place every year on the first Saturday in June. That is 50 children from my school, and each child had at least one or more parent or family member attending the meet to watch their child compete. My current 5th graders are asking me when we are starting track again. Some even started asking me before Christmas. That's how excited they are about participating. But I had to tell them the The following day, I received an email from our Director of Student Life. She wanted to work things out. We met, and a couple of these gentlemen were with us. And it was that it was very clear that she does not use Policy 4260 in her decision-making. Her feeling was anyone or any organization has the right to bump any Tacoma school programs if she so chooses. How can there be such a lack of respect for all the work that we have done in getting twenty-five schools with four hundred-plus students and their physical education teachers for an all-city track meet? This administration is going to kill a long-held program unless you are willing to stop what is happening. We are ready to meet with the School Board anytime you want. You just need to let us know.
My name is Teresa Waitert. I'm the PE teacher at Stafford Elementary School. A year ago spring, I had fifty Stafford fourth and fifth graders participate in my after-school track and field program for eight weeks. All fifty kids then went to the all-city elementary track and field meet at Mount Tohoma High School that takes place every year on the first Saturday in June. That is fifty children from my school, and each child had at least one or more parent or family member attending the meet to watch their child compete. My current fifth graders are asking me when we are starting track again. Some even started asking me before Christmas. That's how excited they are about participating. But I had to tell them the painful truth, that the Tacoma School Athletic Department gave away our track date to an outside organization, Relay for Life, and that our kids were not a priority. Naturally, their response was, that's messed up. How can that be? That's what I want to know. How can that be? Since when does an outside organization take precedence over a longtime annual school district event? How come an outside organization rates the best track and field facility in the state while Tacoma fourth and fifth graders get the rat hole? I'm speaking about Lincoln. The Lincoln Bowl was a good track venue in its heyday, but with its poor sound system, lack of covering, bad restrooms, terrible parking, and poor handicap accessibility, it is not the place for a program that has four hundred Tacoma School District participants along with about five to six hundred spectators, or maybe even more than that. If we cannot get Tacoma's track and field venue for Saturday, June third, then I recommend that this School Board direct the district to provide and pay for a suitable facility outside our school district such as UPS or either Franklin Pierce or Clover Park School District's stadium. If that is not an option, then I suggest that the district provide for a mass field trip for all fourth and fifth graders and their classroom teachers and their PE teachers and transport them to Mount Tohoma High School on either Thursday, June first, or Friday, June second, so they can have their track and field meet. That would include providing substitutes for the PE teachers who would need to run the meet and coach their teams, a task they have done for over twenty years on a Saturday with little or no pay. Thank you very much for your time.
That concludes public comment. Thank you to those of you that shared your thoughts with the Board today. We're moving on to item number seven, which is the superintendent's support. Superintendent?
So I just want to give an update today about, I think the public has heard us talk a little bit about the Wallace grant that we're pursuing. And so we have been doing, I think the public's very aware that we've been doing great work with the social emotional learning of our students. We were real excited. The Wallace Foundation asked us to apply to see if there were some things we could do, a program that we could outline our program and apply for funds to extend what we're currently doing with the social emotional learning. Excuse me. Offered a planning grant of four hundred thousand dollars, and so we did apply, and there are about, I think, eight to ten, I'm not sure of the exact number, eight to ten school districts across the country that were chosen to apply for the grant, and Tacoma is one of those. And we're sitting there with Dallas and Boston and New York City and Oakland, and so we're a really good company. So then we had to submit the beginning of that planning grant, hoping for a balance of three hundred thousand dollars to submit a huge proposal for, you know, some very good funds to continue our work. And so we did get the three hundred thousand this week. This is a partnership with Tacoma Public Schools. I had it written down to make sure I don't forget anybody. Tacoma Public Schools, Schools Out Washington, the Foundation for Tacoma Students, the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation, and the University of Washington Tacoma. So all these folks are working together to submit good work. And if we don't get the grant, we will still have an incredible structure, infrastructure, foundation, system to continue our work in Tacoma. So it's something to be really proud about. Great people working together from Tacoma and these other agencies to further our work with social emotional learning for all students in service of the whole child.
Student Board Member Olson.
Yeah, I learned about this last Thursday, and I know my student rep buddy, she is also very excited about this. We both were very thrilled when we heard about it, so we're very excited, and we hope everything works out because I definitely believe school should not just be in education. Like, I believe education can be dispersed out so many different ways, and I think it's going to help us in the future, definitely, especially when we go to college. So thank you, yeah.
Thank you very much for that, Superintendent Santoro. And we're moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes all sorts of information. That's the basics of running the district and keeping things moving. All of our Board members have received all the information in advance. We've had a chance to look at it. I like to let people know that because there's a lot here, and we're going to pass it in a single motion and go on to the next item. That being said, is there a motion?
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, five oh. Scrolling down to item number nine is policy matters, and there are no policy matters this evening. Item number ten is the quarterly financial update, and there is not a quarterly financial update, but you can always find statements at tacomaschools.org/finance/pages/financialreports. And you can also find that link on the agenda document if you couldn't write that down fast enough. Item number eleven is curriculum and instruction. There's no items under there. Number twelve is business matters, and here we have the item number twelve point one, pardon, which is the approval of addendum number one for Maxim Healthcare Services, behavioral.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, request the Board of Directors approve the addendum number one with Maxim Healthcare Services Behavioral in an amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, five oh. Under other business, item thirteen, there is no other business. Item number fourteen is the report to the Board. Fourteen point one is the benchmark report, and the presenter is our Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, Tony Pace, and our Director of Community Partnerships.
And Ms. Pace is unable to join us tonight, and so we have Ms. Mary Lee Tambera and Ms. Amanda Scott-Thomas, who will be doing our progress report. And just a quick reminder to the Board, this is like our mid-year check report, so we won't have your final data for the year, but we wanted to make sure you had an update of the progress being made by the department in relation to goal number two, partnerships, and the specific monitoring benchmarks. So I think they're ready to go.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. Again, it's a pleasure to be before you, Superintendent Santoro, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, Board President Ushka, Board Members and Community. As Deputy Superintendent Garcia stated, this is a ten-minute presentation. It's an update. I don't have many conversations that take place in ten minutes, so I'm going to be talking a little fast. But we're excited to be here before you and talk to you about the work of the Community Partnership Office so far this year. And so Mary Lee Tambera is here. She is the coordinator for the office, and she's going to be presenting with me. She's going to be my clicker. You ready? Yep. All right. So the partnership goal number two is the focus of today's presentation. The district has committed to fully engaging parents, community, and staff in the education of our students and student success. Every year, we report to you on several benchmarks, and we're going to focus on a couple for this evening. Two of the things that our office looks at is welcoming environments and engage families and parents. And one of the indicators or measures that we use to examine that is our volunteers. How many volunteers do we have in our school annually? And so we've been tracking this number since two thousand and thirteen, and as you can see, this number has historically been reported from March to March every year, so we're here a little bit early. And so we have data from March of last year to February twenty-second. So you can see, we are at ten thousand one hundred and fifty-three volunteers, which is about five hundred under the number that we reported for last year's numbers, but we have another month, and we do have a quite significant amount of volunteers that are processed every month. So we'll be bringing back that information to you as we collect it at the end of March. But that's where we are. We did set a goal for ourselves by the year two thousand eighteen to increase this number by twenty-five hundred folks, and so we'll be talking to you a little bit in our key findings about strategy and how we'll respond to this data. All right. So key findings around this is the Partnership Office is partnering with the Public Information Office on the district-wide customer experience initiative called Connect, because we know that welcoming environments increase and engender volunteerism in our buildings. And so we have a staff person, Talana Pinton, who's going to be one of the key trainers in the district, and we're excited about that. And if you've met Talana, you know she has the gifts for gab, and so she'll be doing a great job at that. We also are going to be putting before you a district-wide volunteer system project management pilot proposal in our budget by priorities request. As you know, the district does not have a centralized way of tracking and monitoring our volunteers and hours, and so we run an annual report, but there's really no way for us to engage or connect with volunteers in a centralized manner. So we think that that strategy will help us increase our numbers by celebrating our volunteers, recognizing them, and being able to provide another data point, which is volunteer hours, which we don't have right now without a system. We also will be talking to you a little bit later in this report about family liaisons. We have a group of new, eager, excited family liaisons in the building that are doing a lot of building-level work that will help deepen family and community engagement and outreach efforts. So we'll be leveraging their presence in buildings also to increase volunteerism. The district climate survey, as you might be aware, last year, we administered a brand-new and improved district climate survey. We actually crosswalked the questions in our old climate survey with the new climate survey so that we're not setting new baseline data. We're comparing apples to apples in the area of, actually, in the entire climate survey. But for our purposes in family or in the Community Partnership Office, we look at climate survey data in the area of engagement, communication, and diversity. And so Mary Lee is going to be talking to you a little bit about the climate survey findings for this last year, but we also wanted to make you aware that we also have other sources for data that we will share with you again at our year-end annual report that we provide for you. But along with the climate survey, we also administer our annual community-based organization survey. That comes out in every spring, has not happened yet because most of our activity and a lot of our work happens in the springtime, so that's yet to happen, but it will be happening. We also have other methods of data collection for our work. When we do events and activities in the community, we do collect evaluations for those events and activities, and then we provide you with an annual partnership report at the end of the year once we've conducted all of our efforts. So we'll be sharing that with you. So Mary Lee's going to get into pieces of the climate survey that was administered in two thousand sixteen.
Right. So we can see our response rates over the last four years, and they have been in decline throughout all racial groups. And there are, in the new climate survey, there are two new answer choices, which are at the bottom, multiracial and no answer, and those are grayed out for the other years that that wasn't an answer choice. And then this is the same data as was shown in the previous chart, but it's represented in a pie chart. And what we found interesting was if you look at the bottom right-hand pie chart, you'll see the green area, and the green area represents the people that responded as multiracial and that impact on the people who had previously responded as white. And then moving on to our communication category, you can see that the feelings of people around engagement has increased slightly over the last three years, eight percent. And then in the area of diversity, it has also increased over the last three years by ten percent. That's represented in the orange bar, sorry. And then in the engagement category, it has also risen seven percent. So that's good news. So in response to the declining number of respondents, we have a few ideas about what we're going to implement, and we are going to partner with the Public Information Office, with our key community-based organizations that have ethnic focus, our ELL Department, and of course, Public Information Office.
And also in responding to the data and the trend over time around those numbers decreasing, and it's not great, but it's enough every year where we want to address the trend, one of the things that we haven't done while we have engaged our community-based organizations to help us promote and support the survey, we are looking at developing with Public Information a social marketing campaign around targeting communities of color, make your voice count. We've really never had like a solid message. We just, you know, everybody participate in the climate survey, but because the data is trending as it is, we see the need for targeted outreach efforts. So we're going to be working on a social marketing campaign to address this, as well again, leveraging the power of the family liaisons that are in the building. One of the things that me and Mary Lee have discovered as well is that we may be integrating some of the climate survey participation into events and activities that we host every spring, since the climate survey is administered each spring, and so we can incorporate them into activities because sometimes when you get people one-on-one and you have conversations, they're more apt to take the survey, as well as our non-English-speaking parents and families may need some help and support. And so we will be developing strategies around that so we can come to you with a better number in future years. All right. Benchmark number three for our office, we measure partners supporting student success. So each year, we track the number of formal organizations, formal partnerships, and by formal, we mean that we have an MOU or a contract with an organization. I will preface this report with the fact that partnerships are developed throughout the district. The Partnership Office is not the only office that administers and administrates partnerships, but we do track for the Partnership Office, the ones that we produce, and then our two other main partner-producing partners in the district, which are the Next Move Internship Program that works with businesses as well as CTE. They also work with community-based organizations and businesses and provide partnerships or compose partnerships for the district. This year, for two thousand fifteen through two thousand sixteen, we have sixty-six new partnerships to report, so these are not duplicated numbers. These are new partners into the district, whether they be business partners or community-based organization. We set a goal for ourselves around ten to twenty partnerships every year, and as you can see, we've met those goals. Partnerships are pretty easy to come by in the district. The process can kind of take a while sometimes, but people want to partner and support student success, so that's been light work for us. So we're really excited about reporting those numbers.
I would just interject that that is a very humble statement, the partnerships that the staff works very hard at formalizing, making sure that they are aligned with the strategic plan goals and benchmarks, and we are very fortunate to have a community that wants to partner with us, but there is a lot of work, and there's a lot of growing on both sides about how to be effective partners. And we are fortunate to have these two and Talana to help us guide in that process.
Thank you, Josh. Benchmark number three talks about expanded learning opportunities. So we track the number of expanded learning opportunities, and by expanded learning opportunities, we mean that learning opportunities that are provided for students outside of the school day. And so those would be some that we have established in our office that are continuing from year to year, such as Student Government Day that we facilitate with the City of Tacoma for high school students that learn about the city and jobs in the city and meet city officials. And we do that in concert with the mayor. It's a great event. We have a youth minority law forum that takes place down at the Superior Court. This year, we'll be taking another set of middle school schools' students to that event, so we're excited about that. And then Summer College Depot is a partnership that we've established with the Tacoma Public Library. It's a six-week college prep program that we facilitate in partnership with the library. And also former Tacoma Public School students who graduated and matriculated onto college, they come back and share their stories and support other young people on their journey to college. This year, we are working with the Tacoma Urban League, who's actually been a longtime informal partner of Tacoma Public Schools, but they've never actually had a formal partnership with us. They work through some other partners, so we're working this year on having their own independent formal partnership with the district. We also established a partner with Goodwill of the Olympics and Rainier Region for the Women-to-Work Program, which is actually an expanded learning opportunity for parents that supports student success. They support mothers of young children and their education and early learning. We've had some partnerships, we're developing a partnership with KBTC, which is Bates Technical College. We're doing some work and events. You'll hear a little bit later about the Paint to Learn, Learn to Paint Nights, and we're working in partnership with them. And then Office Depot, a local corporation, has engaged the district around early learning. I didn't know, and you may not know, but Office Depot actually has a whole education wing, and they are doing education work in a couple of cities across the nation, Tacoma being one. So they've reached out to us. We've had an in-store early learning event. We had Hendrix the Husky there, and we're really trying to promote a college-going culture at a young age. So they're an exciting partner, and we have about two more events scheduled with them this year.
We need to have Butch the Cougar there, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Great suggestion, Director Viall. Great suggestion.
I'd like that, not Garcia.
Depending on if there are availability, I might have to wear the costume, but I'll do it for the kids.
Thank you.
I think we can arrange that when we get available.
Thanks, Director. So key findings and next steps around partnerships is that we're going to continue to increase them. So key findings and next steps around partnerships is that we're going to continue to increase them, of course. We had a recommendation from Legal that we will be integrating some boundary invasion training into our contracts with our formal partners. As it stands, all of our partners already do background checks, and they have their own processes. But we're adding an extra layer to safety and doing some education around boundary invasion training. So that will be a part of our contracts this coming year, so that's a new change. We have a continuous focus of partnering around the benchmarks. So all of the activities that we do connect to academic excellence, safety, early learning, or partnership. And then we are focusing our work also on dual-capacity building. And when we say dual-capacity building, that's out of, it's a framework out of the Department of Education via Harvard. But it really talks about increasing the capacity of families and communities to engage with public education, while at the same time increasing the capacity of our systems, our educators, our teachers in engaging parents and families. So it's a whole framework and approach that we take when doing this work, and we're excited about that.
It's really critical that that framework be a basis for us because, as we know, and we had this conversation, Amanda and Dr. Cabista and I today, about, you know, there's this fence, and sometimes the parent's on one side of the fence and the staff's on another side of the fence, and we only go to one side of the fence. And so this approach is really about ultimately is removing the fence altogether. And so that we're working to invest in the capacity of not saying that you should learn the school's language, the institution's language, but more importantly, what can we learn from you? And how can we educate our staff, and vice versa? And so we're excited about this approach. It came right from the Family Partnership Office and their leadership. And I think you're going to hear much great success in the future about the work that's happening in that area.
Thank you. And Mary Lee is going to talk to you about the district-wide and citywide attendance campaign.
Yes, as you know, last year and this year, we attended the Harvard Institute. And from there, we did the pilot on the nudge letters. And to enhance the nudge letter effort, we decided to do a district and citywide attendance campaign. And so we reviewed attendance materials across the nation. And what was kind of startling was that there was no really compelling reason for parents to really focus on attendance. So what we did was we showed families in infographic form the link between attendance and academic achievement and all the different milestones. For example, so here's the one that we did for elementary. We did three posters. We worked in conjunction with PIO and Research and Evaluation. But this was, I felt, was really compelling. So we know that two out of three students with good attendance read well by the third, by the end of third grade. And from our statistics, we know that 96% of our students who read well by the end of third grade graduate from high school. So we feel like this is a very compelling argument for parents to understand the importance of attendance, rather than just saying, you know, you need to go to school. So we did this for elementary, middle, and high school. The high school one's kind of fun because it shows stacks of money if you graduate from high school. You know, there's different amounts you can make, having a high school diploma, college diploma, and so on. And we vetted all of our materials with the community to make sure that we had a very strong positive voice in our attendance message. For the first time, we created a definition for good attendance. It's missing not more than one day of school per month, whether excused or unexcused. And that was something that we wanted to bring forward to parents because we want them to know that excused absences make a big difference and an impact on academic performance. And then we also came up with this, this was also vetted by the community, "Every minute in school counts." And that's our slogan and logo for the attendance campaign. In addition, we had great partnerships with Graduate Tacoma. They did billboards across the city. This is what this looked like. And we use the same graphic designer that they use, so there was consistency in the messaging. And then with our after-school partners, these materials were given to them so that the students can hear the message about attendance throughout the day, not just within the school walls. And then KBTC is also a great partner. They ran video spots for three months around the importance of attendance. And then it wasn't just enough to tell parents, you know, attendance is important. We wanted to give them tools. And so we developed this great, Amanda went to a conference, and she came back with something similar to this. So we developed one of our own. And it's a guide to good attendance, how you know if your child needs to stay at home. Some parents just don't know, like, at what temperature should my child stay at home? And then we have an attendance tracker for excused and unexcused absences. And it shows you clearly in color when you're getting to a danger area of too many absences. This was also created as a magnet that you could, they can put on their refrigerator. So we can pass these materials around later. Oh, and then this is also about the nudge letter. So as you know, last year, we did the pilot at Lister and then with our ninth-grade students. And that was successful, so we got the go-ahead, thank you very much, for a district-wide implementation. And so far, the statistics have been very positive. Two letters have gone out so far. And this effort, this whole attendance effort that we're doing in conjunction with other departments in the district, we got a, Seattle Times is very interested, and they're going to create a story on this.
So I wanted to publicly acknowledge Mary Lee's leadership on this. She has become an attendance warrior. And so she has really dug deep into this work and worked with a lot of great partners, as well as internal partners. So student life, the Public Information Office, everybody's been great in getting this thing off the ground. And we're really excited about the impact that it will have on students and families in a positive way.
Thank you, Amanda. And then, you know, we, our office did the pathway partnership with Tacoma Public Library. And so we're using this as a way also to build or help students who have been chronically absent. So we created two postcards. One's called Book Flicks. That's a service that the Tacoma Public Library offers our students. Our students can access the Tacoma Public Library through their student ID. Book Flicks says, "Read Allowed Books." There's about 200 books. And we have seen growth in literacy in our elementary school, particularly in McCarver and at other schools. And Help Now is another service to Tacoma Public Library, where they offer one-on-one tutoring, seven days a week, 3:00 to 10:00 o'clock. And so students who have fallen behind due to their attendance, we can lead them to this.
And I mentioned before about the family liaisons. This is a new role in the district that you'll be hearing more about in the future as they get acclimated into our system. But we're really excited about having a person in buildings. Right now, there are 13 liaisons in 14 of our elementary schools. And they're doing work, their role is really around connecting families to community resources. They support the work of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative and social-emotional learning. They also support McKinney-Vento Building leads, and they engage in classroom visitation. This group of folks, along with some external partners, we've been, has been really instrumental in facilitating the Paint to Learn, Learn to Paint nights that we facilitated in schools. We've reached over 500 families. And I will tell you that it's one of my favorite events. After a long day, I get to go do art with elementary school students. It's a great photo op. And what parents really love about it is there's not often free activities that they can do with their student, and they're in the school, and it's just a great, great event. And we've had a lot of fun. And so those family liaisons have been helping to organize those, pull those off, do the promotion. And we have several more scheduled throughout the school year. But so far, we've engaged over 500 parents and families. And they will also, again, keep that message and the work of dual-capacity building going. And you will also see them more present in the leadership of the superintendent's breakfast. So they'll be doing some education there as well. So we're excited about this new role. And again, as we roll things out, you'll be hearing more about these family liaisons. We do an annual family and community learning academy every year. This year's date is 2000, is March the 25th. On Saturday, we're going to be at Bernie Elementary School. We started the FCLA at elementary school. We did our first one at McCarver. And this year, we are focusing on early college and career exposure, math literacy at home, and social-emotional learning. We're working again with the family liaisons to design this program. We're going to have sessions in Spanish and English. And our keynote speaker, we're really excited this year, is Professor Jared Abawu, who is a mathematician and an artist at Tacoma Community College. He is an African student who is going to be talking to our families about cultivating passions at home and how you can connect your passion to your career. And he's really excited. He's got an inspiring story, so he's going to be there with us. And then we're inviting Joe Langford back, who's going to be doing a session on cyber safety. And so we have that and a couple of other great classes for parents, and we're excited about that. So please come out and join us at Bernie on Saturday, March the 25th.
I was just going to acknowledge, there's a great partnership with MSM Deli that will also be there. And so just a little bit of love for those. Those sandwiches are amazing.
They are a very...
Maybe it's just because I haven't eaten, but I just like, wow. I'm going to rearrange my calendar.
Paul, who is the manager now for his dad, is a Henry Foss 1999 graduate.
They always give us a great deal, and people are excited about those sandwiches. So they'll be the caterer this year. We'll have a free meal for, a free lunch for our families. This year, we're going to continue on with college tours for families. And again, with a system-wide approach to early college awareness and career awareness, we are actually broadening our reach when it comes to college tours. Traditionally, we have had a lot of high school students, but every year, we do have parents that bring their younger kids. And so this year, we wanted to open it up. And so we're inviting families to come with students that are sixth grade and up. And so it's college tours for families. Tacoma Public Schools is taking families to visit our eight higher ed institutions. The, all of them are excited about having families there. We are working with a couple of our community-based organizations and churches to sign families up and get them on the buses and out visiting colleges. So this is always a great time, always a great information, or always a great opportunity for parents and families. And we want to, again, push home the point that college is a plan, not just a dream. And so we're talking about that early. Next steps for the Partnership Office. I am really excited and I hope to excite you the next time that we come before you to talk about our partner mapping project. Someone mentioned earlier, your schools at Washington. They are engaged right now in a statewide mapping project, where they are mapping all of the out-of-school-time organizations in the state. We are working with that same provider to do a mapping project for Tacoma Public Schools because we want to have a virtual map of where our partners are, what buildings they're in. And so we're starting on the first phase of that. So hopefully, I'll have something really dynamic to show you the next time we're before you, or at least the phases of this partner mapping project. We'll continue with the dual-capacity building via the family liaisons and the work of our office, continued improvement in our volunteer systems and protocols. We are working with a parent advisory council, and I'm actually excited to talk to you about that in the future, too, as that work emerges. But out of Graduate Tacoma, there's a group of parents that have gotten together, and they're really interested in engaging around family engagement in Tacoma Public Schools. So we're going to be doing some policy work. They're taking, they've taken a look at the district policy on parent involvement, and they're going to make some recommendations to the board around the parent involvement policy, as well as the Title I parent involvement policy, which has to be revised every year. This group is going to be taking a look at that. And they've already engaged with curriculum and instruction and done some advisory work for them. So we're building that, that parent advisory group, so I'm excited about that. Continue work around the partnerships and the benchmarks and alignment. And you will all be happy, especially President Ushka, because I know that she's talked about this before. We are partnering with the Special Needs PTA. They formed a group, and so we are going to be doing some great work with them and integrating more education and events around special-needs families. And so we're excited about that work. We've already begun talking, so you'll be seeing them at the superintendent breakfast and other events and activities.
And that's the 10-minute brief mid-year update.
So as always, we're thrilled with the work that you're doing in your office and the leadership it provides. I had to stop myself from clapping when you told me about that, so just imagine that on video. But that's fantastic. I want to start by opening it up to my peers for any questions or comments. Let's start with Director Viall.
Thank you. I'm really intrigued with the work that you're doing on, is this on? Yeah. On the attendance. That came up, actually, and I've seen your thinking, when I went with the data review for Head Start, they've had some of the same issues with attendance. And one of the things that they were doing was trying to find out the reasons why. Do we do any attempt to figure out why kids may not be coming? Maybe they lost home, or they're, for the little kids, it was getting other kids to school. So they were able to, at Head Start, kind of adjust some of the family schedule, let them come at 10. But I was wondering if we have done any, you know, kind of data look at what are some of the underlying causes of some of this chronic missing school? And maybe we can work with some of our other community partners to help address those. If we get an idea, either the survey or the schools or whatever, we can learn, you know, from Head Start because they've made a big impact on that by doing that, and then addressing. Now, I was thinking, for example, there were some mothers that, where Lister, Ray Maltos did that when I worked, who was the principal who we lost, as we all know, way too young. But he had a mom who a lot of the kids' mothers worked, and they left early, and another mom who didn't, and she would, Lisa would have about six, seven kids in tow every morning, stop by and pick them up. So, you know, maybe we can kind of take a look at that and gets, you know, your results are awesome. I mean, I think the nudge letters are great. But maybe at the building level, where we do have more, Dr. Garcia, the superintendent, where we do have more attendance issues at some schools than others, like we did at Lister, maybe we can do some creative things like Ray did, getting these kids to school in the morning by having someone, you know, help get them there and kind of take a look at this. I think we've got the framework. I think this is great. Now I think we need to maybe drill it down a little bit.
Director Viall, just to refresh you, remember, you gave us some ideas with truancy last year. And so we've been, had a chance to work in some of those, working in student life and under the direction of Mr. Mike Ruper. And really goes into that deep dive and including matching up with some community members, talking with kids, talking with families to get to some of those underlying issues. Some of them are school issues, and some of them are outside of school issues. But then developing action plans. And if you'd like, we can bring that back to you at a further date of some of those results. The great thing is, is we've seen some success. The unfortunate is that we just don't have enough people to do that deep work to the level that we need to. It doesn't mean that we're not working in that direction, but that, we can bring that back to you in a further update.
Yeah, we'd like to see that at some point. And I'm not implying that we're not working. I know we are. And maybe it's something that we, you know, can be a little more, a little creative, like Ray just did that on his own, you know, and said, can you pick these kids up? And yep, because they'd show up late or not at all well. I didn't have, I didn't wake up, or I didn't, in their, you know. And I think that's a way that we can maybe push that envelope and just go back and do a little bit of creative thinking on that with some of the schools. Oh, I had a question. What's the Urban League going to do for us?
Their regular programs that they do, they do a lot of mentoring and after-school programming.
Right, I do, so we're just...
Yeah, it'll just be independent.
Like the MIP program they did, and okay, that was it. Anyway, that's all I have. And awesome job and all the outreach and everything. And it's fun to go run around and brag about you guys when we get the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Viall. Director Hines?
Thank you. Thank you for the good report. On the topic of attendance, there was an article in the paper recently about Jerome Kirsch making phone calls. Is Mr. Kirsch calling any of our students? And if not, perhaps we could identify an iconic, I don't know, an Isaiah Thomas or an iconic, someone that would resonate with the kids getting the call. And it was, he was pretty clear that it wasn't a warm, fuzzy, hey, it's Jerome, how you doing? It was get yourself to school. So some of those where it's not your parent who's supposed to tell you to go to school, or the people that you would expect to go to school. I know LeBron James, with the scholarship program he runs, does something very similar when he learns that those kids that he's been sponsoring aren't getting to school. You get the call from LeBron James, and he's strongly encouraging you to get to school. So that might be a fun way for us to engage another student. Sure, we've got so many great iconic, and I'm focused on athletes, but people that the kids would know, that it would be, oh, I want to live up to this person's expectation because I admire this person. And it's a different dynamic when they call and tell me to go versus somebody that I'm more familiar with.
So New York did something similar, and we really want to do that. We were having trouble finding the people who could make the calls. So if you'd love to get the list for you and contacts. We did, the KBTC said they would help us get PBS characters to do the calls. So yeah, we'd love to get those names.
Well, a couple for starts, Lawyer Malloy and Marcus Trufant would both be good. Former Seahawks and Lincoln and Wilson grads, and were good students. Former Seahawks and Lincoln and Wilson grads, and were good students.
I offered my angry mother voice, but that didn't overwhelm.
And then, just a couple of questions. On slide number three, when you talked about the target number is 2,532.
Yeah.
And we see the, the year-over-year numbers. What's the baseline? Was confused on what the 2,532 represents.
So, I think the, that represented when we established the ba, the benchmark, I think back in 2014, it was an increase of, I think, 25% over time, and it came out to 2,500 folks.
So, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Maybe you were gonna answer. The, so just to clarify then, would that be the 9,846 plus 2,532 would be?
It would be the, actually, let me see. I think it's that first 2013 number, actually. Would be 2,500.
So, that in 13, we hit it in 13?
Hold on, I can't find the paper.
Was the target number 2,500 and we hit 10,000?
No, no, no. It was an increase.
Increase of 2,500.
Yeah.
From what? Yes. So, from what?
From the 2,013 number.
So, then 12,663 is the number we're shooting for?
We will clarify that and get back to you.
Okay.
The, the, the number of 2,532 was an increase. In some of the previous conversations that the board has had, it was not just the percentage, but what does that really reflect?
Right.
In, in a number. And so, that number of 2,532 is an increase of 2,532.
Okay. So, if you could clarify from what, so I know when we're at 10,153, if we're getting close or if we're...
We can get that back to you.
Yes, we will.
And then, with respect to engaging parents, the climate survey, as long as I've been on the board, I've always struggled with the formation of the questions, the communication of the application, the opportunity for kids and parents to participate. So, I wonder if we might want to spend some more time. I don't have a clear understanding on why we've seen the decline in participation. And I know it's probably challenging when people aren't participating in a survey to figure out why they're not participating in a survey. Can't give them a survey to figure out why they're not. But for us to collect data to understand, because for me, anecdotally, I wonder if they don't understand the value or how that information is going to be used. And so, when we get to the strategies of how to try to increase participation, perhaps that could be a part of that communication is say, this is why we're asking you these questions. This is how we're going to use that information, not simply, please, take the time because it's really important because we want to hear your opinion, but then that end result, so they can think through, oh, if I participate, then I can start to look for these sorts of changes based on the responses of, of my responses and the responses of the others in the district.
Okay, got it. Duly noted. And we can integrate that into the social marketing campaign, why it's important to make your voice count.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yes.
And then, the, to the family liaisons, that's, I think it's a fantastic program. How are those liaisons being placed? When we see the schools where they currently are, is there a methodology?
Yeah, the methodology is, is that schools, elementary schools specifically, last year, we knew we needed to give some more enhanced support for things that were outside of just academics, social, emotional learning. And schools and as part of their school improvement plans, as part of the principal voice, had several different options of what is, based on what I currently have, what is the next step for me? That could have been an additional counselor. It could have been a social worker. It could have been, in some cases, maybe a dean of students or a, a family liaison. And so, every school has a family liaison component as part of their school improvement plan. And so, some schools said, I really need this based on my plan and my individuality. The long-range plan or long-range dream would be is to have one in every school. But, you know, with the, the instability of educational funding right now, it's, it's difficult for us to take those kind of large risks.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, just to comment on the March 25th for the Learning Academy. Most of us are gonna be in Denver for the National School Board Association Conference. So, I was just gonna ask Dr. Garcia to not eat all of the sandwiches.
Save some.
Save some for when the school board members get back.
That I cannot guarantee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hines. Director Wensky?
Okay, so I was gonna say the same thing about March 25th, because I usually do go to that event and I really enjoy it. And so, I'm sorry I'm gonna miss it. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to know what the budget is for a family liaison. So, maybe you could provide that to the board. You know, the, what we, the hours that we have in individual schools and the qualifications of the people who do that job and then what the overall budget is. I am, you've been working hard, it seems. And when you talk about those college tours, I was adding up all the numbers of schools. So, is Bates part of that?
Yes.
Good. Yeah. So, I know that they're really anxious to get more Tacoma school involvement. So, I'm really happy to hear that. And that, that's about the only question, the question I have. But thank you for all the really hard work.
We have Bates and Clover Park.
Yeah, I figured that.
Yeah, are two of the Volk Tech colleges.
University of Washington Tacoma, Puget Sound, Tacoma Community College, Pierce College, Evergreen State College, PLU, Bates and Clover Park is our tour. And we've really focused in on close to proximity.
Yeah.
And Amanda and her team have, are, are, were getting smarter. When we first started, they were all in one week.
Yeah.
Amanda was on the bus all over. And we learned from families through that feedback is, is, I want to go to more than one, but I can't just do them all. And so, you know, schedules are getting busy. And so, we encourage you to go to as many as possible, but we are consistently going to the same colleges year after year because we know that you may not be able to go every year to the ones you want to. As well as, these are our partners that are supporting our kids, and we want to make sure that we let folks know of those true gems inside of our community that are right here in distance.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Cobb.
I just have a couple of questions and comments. On the volunteer number?
Yeah.
I won't ask or answer now, but I would just be curious, because we've already had some discussion about it. I'm just curious about what that gets us, like what kinds of activities the volunteers are engaged in and what the needs are, just to have a sense of if that's, I mean, I wasn't here when 25% was established, but if that's the right number, based on what they're doing and where the needs are. I'd just be curious to know more about that. And then, on the topic of family liaisons, I'm also, I just want to know a little bit more about them as a group. I know that part of the goal is to help build, like, do that dual-capacity building. So, does having them, like, as a group, do they, do they provide a source of language support with some, for some families? Like, what's the language diversity among the group and just what they're? I just would like to know a little bit more about them and how as a group, they help to bridge that divide, sometimes divide between families and schools, given their collective makeup.
Okay. Think I can create some sort of profile for the group as it stands now.
It just, they seem to play like a very unique role in, in schools. So, it'd just be great to know, like, where, I don't know. I just think they're gonna be a great addition to the buildings that they're in and a great support for both staff and families. And just want to know a little bit more about them.
We agree. And we, we were in conversations today. It's gonna be important for us to all recognize that what we share with you today will evolve. And that's where we're excited. The family liaisons intentionally were sent out into the field to say, tell us in this dual-capacity role versus, there is a job description. We can get you that job description. We can get you the budget. But very much, we just met with them within the last month to say, so what have you learned? And now, what do we need to evolve? And so, think of this as a soft launch. And as we build more capacity, that framework will be even clearer and we'll learn more. And we'll never stop learning in that role because our community is living and breathing. But whatever we share with you at this point, please let there be some forgiveness to understand that. Hopefully, in six months, that looks a little different because we've learned some new things and we've evolved.
No, I just think it, I think it's great and I understand it as a starting point. And I think, as always, Tacoma is in a great position to inform what's happening at the state level. There's lots of discussion about family and community engagement, work, staff, and what their role is and the void that they can fill. So, I just think it's great. My other comment was just about the, the college tours. I assume the answer is yes. But is information about college-bound scholarship incorporated into kind of the things that get shared along that tour?
Yeah, we usually have some sort of gift bag or bag for the event with information about different colleges, different opportunities and college-bound. Depending on the time of year, it might have information about college-bound Saturday, but we have the little cards. So, we do distribute information about all college-related initiatives in the district.
Especially with the addition of middle school students to the group, it'd be a great time to advertise that option. And then, my last question is just, as you're moving into the schools and as you're having, like, learn to paint and paint to, what is it? Learn to paint to learn and learn to paint nights?
Yes.
How are principals responding to the, your work? And have, have you gotten any feedback from principals about whether or not that's increasing the engagement that they're seeing from families or just helping them build relationships with other community partners? How are they responding?
Very positively. So, after we did the first one and the pictures went online and people saw, you know, what an exciting event it was, we had principals reach out to us via the family liaisons or even the principals themselves. Hey, we want this at our school. The other beautiful thing about the event is that we, basically, it's a mobile event. So, we supplied the paint materials, the easels. So, all they have to do is request it. We show up and facilitate it. KBTC, a staff, Alyssa Torres comes out and she facilitates the night. So, it's very easy for them, very appealing, and they've loved it. They've been, most principals stay for the event and participate in it. And they just appreciate being able to create and provide another opportunity that's free for parents to get them into the buildings.
Then my last thing, I promise.
Yeah.
On those nights, do you provide an opportunity for parents to sign up to be volunteers then? Seems like, or if you have, and I think that'd be a great way to get more parent volunteers. Because some of them might not have time during the day to come in and get stuff. So, if they're there that night, it might be a good chance to get them connected.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cobb. Student Representative Olson, do you have any questions or comments?
I would like to agree with Mr. Hines on the climate change survey. I know when I take it, I don't even know why I'm taking it. So, I feel like it'd be very helpful if you guys, like, ask the teachers to tell us why, because I feel like that'd make students want to take it. If it's gonna help improve our school and improve the things going around. It's kind of like our voice to you guys. And I think they don't, like, our students don't understand that. And I feel like if you got the teachers to explain that, I feel like more people would be willing to take it or would take it.
All right. And we might be calling on you to help with some of the messaging around that.
Sounds like she'll enjoy that.
So, you might be our climate survey poster, young lady. So, yeah. So, no, we'd love to get, engage youth voice in our activities, and I think it will be a peer-to-peer message. And so, it would be great to have some young people help us develop that message.
Yeah.
All right.
Great. Ms. Thomas and Ms. Tannenbauer, I love your leadership in this office, the partnerships that you're creating. I mean, you know, I get gushy about this. It's changing lives. It's transforming the way that Tacoma thinks about itself. And that's deeply exciting to me. I could go page by page. I started making lists of things I wanted to give kudos on. And it's, it's too long. And my, my peers have mentioned most of them and asked all the good questions. I am very excited about the special education parents, and I would love to know more about that as it evolves. I have no doubt that I'll be kept in mind. The one comment I am gonna make is that I don't necessarily love billboards, but I love when they're covered with messages about education. It's really exciting because that's also something that changes how people think about our city when they're driving up and down our streets. So, I don't have any other questions or comments beyond that gratitude. So, seeing no others, we will go on to the next agenda item.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Great job.
Next on our agenda is the monthly construction update with Steve Marikami presenting.
Thank you, Board President Ushka, Vice President Cobb, members of the board, Student Representative Olson, Superintendent Santorino, and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. It's our pleasure to be here tonight. We asked that we could get an opportunity, a standing opportunity at the board meetings now that we have 10 projects currently in play from conceptual design to punch lists. This is the busiest we've been in, in some time, maybe ever. And there is so much going on that we wanted to have frequent touchpoints with you to keep you updated on our progress. And so, we're gonna be coming to you at every board meeting, if, if that works for you, with brief touchpoints on financial updates. So, what we're proposing is the first meeting of the month, we'll come to you and give you a financial update. And then, the second meeting of the month, we'll give you project-specific updates with photos to let you know where we are in the progress. And for tonight, we have just a, a brief presentation that follows up on our financial presentation that we gave to you at our last meeting. And we received some really thoughtful feedback from Director Viall about the overall big picture. And when we went back and looked at our presentation, we wanted to clarify and tell the story of the big picture and make sure that we, everybody understood where we were with the total revenue, the total projected expenditures, and to ensure you that all the projects that were in the bond will be realized. So, I've asked Rob and the finance department have worked together to put some numbers together to tell a story a little clearer, I think, on the overall big picture. So, Director Swatzky, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening. Just want to quickly walk you through what we, a summary is, as Steve said. And really, if you see the very first slide here, it talks about the 2013 bond monies that came in, the $500 million, and then other funding, which included previous bond money interest and school construction assistant program monies. It's for a total of $544 million and change. Then, also, if you go down through, you can see that we've got major projects that we've spent and encumbered. And that includes Washington, Sammy, Wilson, McCarver, Stuart, Wainwright, and Arlington. And then, following that, the projects that are remaining and the dollar amount assorted with, assorted with that. So, that would be Mary Lion, Brown's Point, Grant, Bernie, Bose, Downing and Hunt, which are currently in design. So, with those two dollar amounts, you can see our total major capital projects spent and encumbered, projected and budgeted is 509,394,200, sorry, 509,394,000 and change. And so, the small capital projects, we've also reflected there that we have completed and encumbered so far. And our total project expenditures, you can see, are just over 532 million as a projection. And then, that remains unassigned monies, our future small capital projects and contingency. And so, to back this up, if we want to get further into the details, we certainly can share with you this slide, which really looks, again, at the original budget, our revised budgets, the status of those projects, Washington being complete and the other numbers being either projected or budgeted. And again, those totals at the bottom.
I would, I would just add at this point that the revised budgets for the first five or six project, projects were increased. And just as a reminder, Washington, we had a lot of unforeseen structural issues that we had to resolve. Sammy, we expanded scope. Wilson, through the master planning and facility feasibility studies, uncovered more work that we needed to do. McCarver and Stuart both had structural issues to resolve. And Wainwright went from an elementary school to an intermediate school. And so, those, those projects had some variables that swung the budgets to a bigger scale. But as we see that we're, we bid Arlington and it came in under budget, we're projecting it to, to finish under budget, there's more certainty moving forward with the projects remaining, that they are set programs. They're elementary schools. They're more defined. And so, we've gone back through and looked at escalation and the allowances per square foot. And we feel like we have the means to control those budgets and meet those, those targets moving forward. And, and Hunt, as we looked at in several scenarios for the, the scope that we've talked about in the past, we feel that we can come in on, on budget, 48 million that we've established for that project. But that we do have 12 million, nearly 12 million in contingency and, and dollars for future small capital projects that we're gonna be keeping a very close eye on.
I would also add that in our meetings with the design firms and the contractors that we can, we're very clear with the design teams that the, the maximum allowable construction cost is the maximum allowable construction cost. And so, we're being very clear with them about that. The last slide is just to, to kind of mimic what we've shown there. In small capital, it just gives you a breakdown, our original budget of 45 million. We've completed promised projects, just shy of 11 million so far. We've completed other projects that over and above those that were not, that came up that were not promised. And then, we've scheduled another 3.6 million for this summer and for a total of 22.6. And so, our, our small capital funds that we needed to use as contingency to transfer to major capital project is also shown there of about 10.4 million. And our current small capital projects with those totals together is 33 million. And our current small capital projects with those totals together is $33 million. If you add the 33 to what's remaining, the 11, 9, you get the $45 million.
I think it's important also to understand that of the $45 million budgeted, we had 181 projects totaling an estimate of $20 million worth of promises made around the district. And so that extra 25 was designed in for contingency and other projects. And so again, that unassigned and contingency dollars is something we're going to be working closely with. And we'll come back to you shortly with a better recap on the details of the small capital projects, if you wish. So with that, I think our presentation for the night is finished. So we're open to questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, as the board looks at those projects and looks at the projected budget that matches, you know, the budget we do know, I mean, if you find out there's a crater underneath Bose, then again, you're going to have to, you know, relook at scope. So it doesn't look at all, you know, we, I mean, there still could be issues that surface that the board has to look at and, you know, and consider the funding.
And we want to continue to bring to you each month the project status reports.
Okay, good.
Because those start to show the change orders that are coming.
Right.
And the anticipated changes we know could be coming, and to kind of give you a bottom line of where are we going to fall over, under on the total project cost.
Good.
And I just want to clarify that Superintendent Santorino was putting a crater under Bose as an example, but there's no expectation that that's true?
Not any craters.
And no evidence has been presented otherwise?
Earlier, she shared it could be an asteroid. And so I'm glad that we moved to crater first as asteroid.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The impact.
I have a comment I'd like to make.
Sir.
I asked for this to, so that we can see where we are and what we have to finish. And frankly, you know, I really am concerned that we do have enough money to complete what we told our voters we would complete, particularly Hunt Middle School, which has been voted on by voters twice overwhelmingly to be replaced. So I, and I appreciate Steve and Rob coming back with this. And so now this gives us the opportunity, because I felt that we did not have a real good handle as a board on where we were and where we are in this whole process. So I personally am going to be keeping an eye on it. And that hopefully we will not encounter, well, Bose, we won't have a crater, because we're going to tear that down and build a new school. So, and everything else appears will be new construction, and I think that should keep us from having any real unforeseen messes like we had, you know, with some of the other projects that were not. So I'm comfortable right now that we should be able to complete this on time and on budget as we promised, and that we will have an inventory of some pretty nice schools. So I really appreciate staff doing this, and that you'll keep us updated as we go through this now, because it is getting down to the crunch projects and the completions and where we need to make sure we do have enough bucks to get through, through to the end. So thank you very much.
Great. Pardon me. Other board questions or comments? Director Hines?
That whole asteroid thing shook you.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your briefing. I appreciate this document. I also liked the dashboard that you provided at your last briefing. I think that'll help us to stay on top of, on top of these projects. When we hear, so we heard a lot about Wainwright not getting done on time, and then Stuart getting done way early. Can you help explain that? I've had some people say, how could that possibly happen?
Yeah, sorry? Okay, so Wainwright was a project that we had to get out of the dirt in the wettest winter that we've had in recorded history, I believe. We also had the Department of Ecology recognize that this was the most deep cleansing of a site and an example of best practices for cleaning up the site that they have ever seen. They were hand tooling around the trees to salvage those trees and make sure that we had that right. And we were also competing against 72 cranes in Seattle with an amazing demand on steel. And so there were some contributing factors there. And I would say that one, a couple of the reasons why Stuart has excelled is much of the work was interior. So it was a very extensive project, but they were able to get started immediately and work inside in the environment. And we did build a new gymnasium, expanding the footprint a bit. And they did run into some weather issues, but the GCCM relationship that we had on that, I think, proved successful in being able to work through some of those critical paths with steel and give us some alternatives for delivery. So those are, I think, the main primary reasons, I would say.
Yeah, you may recall, we came to you with what we called minimax, maximum allowable construction cost, and that allowed us to do some early bid packages and to get things going earlier as well.
Right, so Stuart was staged in phases where we don't get that opportunity as often with low bid packages.
Last board meeting, Director Swatzky also let us know that we're seeing some trends in our region about timing of schools. And not all, this new standard or this old standard of one year, 12 months, is really being pushed, and we're seeing it happen in several different areas. The short answer is every site is different. Every design is different, and we can't rely on the belief that 12 months is a realistic opportunity to build a school. We'll have to reevaluate, even with these upcoming projects, and say, they may take us longer than 12 months. We don't know that. And so we have to be prepared, and I think what we're learning is we will continue to give ourselves room, even if that means that it may be an extended period of time. And then if we can open up early, we will do so.
Yes. We'd like to come back to you again and speak more about that topic. With estimators in the industry estimating 13- to 15-month-long projects, watching multiple districts open multiple schools late, we want to be ahead of that and make sure we inform you ahead of time about what could be potentially a longer project. And so we'd like to talk more about what that could look like.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's exactly how we need to approach it, so we can calibrate expectation. Because while it is great to get into a new school, and I don't think kids are going to object to going into Stuart on March 13th, that's also disruptive. And treating these as a, I think it's easy to get lost in $500 million for 14 projects and really trying to personalize to calibrate expectations, because we're thinking about getting all the work done, that those community members that are tied to a specific school are really focused on that specific school. And I think people understand when we are in dialogue with them. I think if we come at the last minute and like, ah, it's going to be six more months, they're like, what are you talking about? I think if we can message that and really, because your points are valid and reasonable, I think that it's a visceral response. People want new buildings as soon as possible for their kids, especially given the state of some of these buildings. But when we walked through Stuart last week, it's beautiful. And when you look at what that building was and what it's become, it's worth the wait and now the bonuses those kids get in earlier. But now I don't want us to have this wild swing from, we were late on Wainwright, but oh, now they're going to be six months early on every building that they build. It's going to vary on a case-by-case basis, so we should treat the communications. And we've got such a great communications team. And with what they've done with the drones, which you guys have done to show the progression of the buildings, I think we've got all of the elements. It's just being really intentional with how we communicate before and during the project so that people's expectations are set. With, when we hear about Stafford and those sorts of challenges that we have with our infrastructure, what sort of funding is available to fix those projects? How will we help those kids to not have to steeplechase through puddles every day?
The first thing we're going to go do tomorrow is look at the Asbeld drawings to look at where the under drainage is in that field, and it may need to be jetted and cleaned. But we'll do an analysis of what the existing infrastructure is. If we find that it is going to, you know, recently, we did Franklin, where we went in and there's a very specific machine that cuts a three-foot-deep trench, four inches wide, lays the pipe, fills it back in. Those are expensive projects. Those are $300,000, $400,000 projects, but they do keep the field life extended through the year and the ability to recover. So we'll look at Stafford and see what's there and what the appropriate response is, but we will look at it immediately.
And from what funds do we draw for those?
Potentially small capital projects.
So that's, that's the 11, 9.
That's, that's the difficulty there is prioritizing the work.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And lastly.
There's a, there's a list of small caps that's more than 11, 9.
Yeah.
And so we're in a situation now where we have to, decisions, the right decisions. We have to be very clear about what is the advantage, what is the gain, what are the resources and what's still on the table. And that's why, you know, it's really important we do this district-wide assessment as well to get a better picture of what is the total cost. It may be a short fix for Stafford, and it may be a more extensive one.
Right.
Yes, and so when we're keeping track of all of these projects and to Director Vial's interest in having a document that shows us that we're where we are, so that when we do, I think for folks to understand, when we have these overruns early, when Sammy is $9 million more, and we've got a finite amount of money, and we've got more than $12 million worth of small caps that we can be doing, that's why I think it's so important that we, that we are, that we are sticklers in the negotiations to say, that's it. Unless there's an asteroid, we're not, it's just, it just is, it is what it is, so that we've got some flexibility to do these other things. Because it is very difficult to have these beautiful buildings going up in certain parts of the city that provide state-of-the-art resources and then address parents and students from schools that don't have that and say, how do we strike that balance? And so I think to the extent that we can be really mindful in how we message that so people understand, we are trying to be as diligent as possible, because half a billion dollars is a crazy amount of money. And I think it's easy to get lost in how much that is, but the devil's in the detail. And when we get down to, do we have enough to go in and fix the Staffords and those sorts of things? My last question is around field turf, so continues to be a topic of conversation that seems to follow me wherever I go. People are always curious about the field turf. We have the study that came back from the Department of Health. I'm still not convinced that it was definitive one way or the other, but we don't have medical experts telling us that yes, there's a direct link, so we need to continue to study that. So in the meanwhile, keeping kids safe, so I'm starting to hear people ask about hand washing stations and those sorts of protocols. And inevitably, I hear from schools that say, we've got a PTA that can afford to put one in. I don't want us to means test that, so if you've got a robust PTA that can afford a hand washing station, then your kids may be better protected than those kids that attend schools that don't. As we think about the money for these, I would like to see us come up with some sort of mitigation strategy. So the good news is I'm not putting you on the spot today, but I would like to better understand a mitigation strategy for those fields. What are the things that we believe that we can do? Some of it's just got hygiene, too. I mean, my, Charlotte's sitting out in the audience, she knows, she and her brother come home from Lowell every day. You got to hose them down, because they've got the stuff on there. So if there are ways that we can mitigate that through hand washing stations and other protocols and put it in as a policy and a practice in line with our equity, so everybody gets the same thing, or everybody that has those sorts of fields. Because my understanding is that, I heard someone say, well, the field at Washington has different fill than the field at Lowell, but I thought they were all the same. Is that?
So the base material is the same, and so it's a mixture of sand and the chrome rubber. And we did do an analysis and looked at all the sites that we have put in the kind of residential grade at the elementary schools, and they all have hand washing stations except for Lowell. And so we are investigating opportunities for either a temporary solution or permanent long-term. But we are looking at, we did the due diligence to see where the issues are, and now we're investigating on-site what we can do to fix it. It's a recommendation that came out of the Health Department for, if you are concerned about potential exposure, this is one way, throw a hand washing after you've played on it, before you eat. We also looked at every school to identify which schools have recess before lunch or lunch before recess. So we are looking at that.
So I'd be interested in us memorializing that with the attribution to the recommendations that came out of the Department of Health. And then how do we apply that equitably across the district for schools that are in that situation where they've got this sort, so that we can explain, if you've got this sort of a field, then this is the sort of infrastructure you need. And where you don't have that infrastructure in place, then we may need to put in a portable hand washing station or some other workaround. But when people ask us the question, we can explain the investment of those resources, and we can also assure people that it's the same for all kids across the district.
Agreed. And we'll continue to watch all the other reports as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hines. Director Wenskill.
Just really quick, when I look at Stafford and needing improvement on that field, you know, there is, what is the law, six years that you can go back to the builder if there's a problem? Is that, is that true?
I believe there's statute of limitations of seven.
Seven years.
But.
So, just, pardon me?
I was just going to say, that's, not wanting to speak out of turn, it has to be pretty catastrophic in the kind of grading. I'm not sure if we'd be able to go back to a statute of limitations on that. Typically, it's a one-year, all-inclusive warranty, and then we go to the systems warranties.
Okay, so I was just wondering if, it sounds like this has been ongoing for several years, so I just wondered if that came into that realm of timeframe. But just that information. And we did open Gray early, and that was, you know, middle school was supposed to be two years, we opened it mid-year, right after Christmas, actually. So it sounds like 18 months is kind of a good timeframe for our doing school, so just want to put that out there.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Director Cobb.
I just have one question about cost. I know that there's been an uptick in recent years in the cost of construction, and we're kind of in a Seattle market. Do you anticipate any changes over the course of the next couple of years in cost of building? Or do you anticipate us staying kind of steady or any directional change?
So we did a study to look at historical escalation over the last 16 years, and it's averaged out about 3.75%. And so when we've looked at these numbers, we've tried to escalate the costs to anticipate those cost increases. The hope would be that since the pendulum swung one way and you didn't have enough labor force, now it's going to start to swing the other way as labor force starts to infill. So it's a bit of a moving target. It's not a science, and it's not, it's kind of like predicting the pop of a balloon. It's difficult to predict exactly what could happen. Arlington is an example, bid a million dollars under in an inflated market, and we didn't expect that. Others bid over. So it's hard to predict it. Even the professional estimating groups have had a hard time getting accurate estimates to us.
And the Puget Sound school districts have passed over $1 billion in the last year.
Yeah.
And so the construction market is going to continue to climb. But like Rob's saying, when the economy crashed, a lot of the workforce left, and some of the generals stayed and worked through on skeleton crews, and we're seeing more people come back to our industry in our area. And so that's going to equalize a bit, but there's still a lot of construction coming.
Okay, thanks.
Great. Board Representative Olson, I think, okay. I want to thank you for your report, and I've got a question that I feel like I've asked before, so forgive me if it's redundant. When you were talking about the impact of the many cranes and the demand on steel, is there some way that we can see the permits pulled across the region or something so that we have predictability on that?
There's different trending companies. Dodge Analytics and others track the forecast of those kind of materials, yeah.
So you're looking at, okay.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know, I was just curious.
Yeah, in the last 10 years, steel has gone from $2,000 a ton, $2,000 a ton to $4,000 a ton in 10 years. So the demand is pretty big.
You know, I know some people in the steel industry, I bet you they're pretty happy right now. Thank you for the report. Thank you for being responsive to the board's concerns. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is board comments and reports. And I'm going to start in a different order this time, and let's start with Student Representative Olson.
I do not know if you guys know this, but 92.5 was hosting a contest, and somebody put Stadium's name, and I had also Lincoln's name from the Tacoma District to win $25,000. And it's like a process through voting, and I know Stadium won the voting aspect of it. So at our multicultural assembly, which is going to be, I believe, the 29th of March, we're going to like shoot basketballs, I believe. Not me, but somebody at Stadium who's really good at shooting is going to shoot basketballs, and I think it's every shot they make is $5,000. I believe that's the logistics of it. And so, yeah, it's going to go towards our ASP, which I'm very excited for, because our ASP needs money. So I'm very excited for that, and yeah, I just wanted to share that.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah.
Director Cobb?
No comments tonight.
Director Wenskill?
So I just have a couple of questions, and these could, maybe one could be answered now. So the sale program at, up on Brown's Point, where is that projected to go?
We're still trying to get final numbers. We don't know. It's been, it's ranged from eight students to four students. Our issue is, you know, having a program for that, you know, for that few students in a school. We are committed to having a program at Brown's Point if we can get sufficient numbers. But, so I don't know, the last number I had was four, and we can't run a program with four students. So we're still trying to see what we can do.
And then we're...
we can do.
And then we're, I know Lister's had one of those programs in the past. Is, is that where they would go?
No, they're going to Mann. They would go to Mann.
Okay. And then I have a question about the track meet. And I do know that it generally has been our policy that school events trump all. So I don't know how that happened, that they haven't been able to have their track meet on that day. So if you can get back to us on that.
There's a, there's a lot of variables that have gone into it. I know I've looked at many communications back and forth. I know that, that our athletic director has met with a group of PE teachers several times to resolve the issue and to talk about what the, you know, what some of the, you know, the options are. But yeah, I'll go back and get final details and give you, give you the information about that.
Yeah. I do know in the early days, the Cancer Association had their event at Stadium until Stadium was remodeled. And then they moved to Mount Doma at that time. So I know that's another option for them.
Lincoln is not a pit, by the way.
That was on my comments.
I do say some of those bathrooms probably need to be updated. At Stadium also in the, in the stadium itself, those bathrooms need remodeling. And so do the Lincoln bathrooms, as far as I'm concerned.
Great. Director Heinz?
I appreciate that the superintendent addressed the pit comment because it is the home of the defending 3A boys state track championship team. So I appreciate the passion for hosting the event. And I'm confident that we'll come up with a resolution if both sides are truly committed to finding an outcome. I just wanted to give kudos to President Ushka. I had an opportunity with Director Viall to attend the Greater Metro Parks Foundation luncheon yesterday. And just appreciative of where we're going with that Eastside Community Center and, and your passion for the project and, and the advocacy that, it was very apparent, the commitment that you have to the project. And I was proud to be a part of it. I know that the district is, is a player. There are others that are doing more. I think we're doing our part. But just want to make certain that you were formally recognized by this board for the good work that you're doing on behalf of kids and families on the east side. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Heinz.
Me?
Sorry, Director Viall. I was flustered because I was flushing.
Everybody always forgets me. I don't understand.
I don't think that's true for a moment. We could do a survey.
Do a survey. Okay. All right. Just two, two things quickly. I, I attended the data review for Head Start weeks ago, which was really great. We're doing some pretty amazing things in our Head Start program with getting it aligned to the WA kids. And the kids now that are ready, test out ready for kindergarten, coming out of that program. And they're really working hard now with, to get the three-year-old kids moved up higher, as we started doing the three fours and the four-year-olds now. And so anyway, it was just very enlightening. And I want, they're just doing some amazing, really, really hard work in the Head Start program, in making Head Start truly a part of what we do and not being an outlier, as it had been for years. The other thing was, after last board meeting, Marie Verhar suggested I might want to go over and, last Friday, and watch the, the alignment of the standards for English language. And I thought, you know, that might be as interesting as watching grass grow. But I was surprised. And I'm very glad that I went. What was going on were teams from all the schools were there, and they were intertwined. There were teams that were looking at aligning our English language standards from kindergarten up through high school. And that's part of our transitions and the things that we're talking. And the standards, we're making sure that our district standards are in line with the state standards. And each one of the teams had to prioritize the standards. And it was interesting, they had big white, you know, sticky stuff all over, and they appear it was a priority. And I walked around the room, and there was just such energy. And, and one teacher said, you know, this is fun. I, I teach high school, and, and here I am with kindergarten teacher from. So you had teams from kindergarten through high school in each level. And I think what will come out of that will be an opportunity for us to really make sure that each, each grade literally vertically aligns with the one under it all the way up, according to what we want our kids to learn. And then the teachers will obviously do within what that, how they want to teach it. But to me, it was an amazing exercise. And I was really just blown away by the enthusiasm of all the principals and staff and, and faculty members that were there. And I just want to say, bless them for wanting to do that kind of work, because it's very intensive. It was kind of scary. I was looking at that, and I thought, where in the heck would you start? And they did. And by the end of the day, it, I actually was only going to drop in. I wound up staying three hours just watching because it was amazing. So I know we're going to get a report on that at some point. And Marie, thank you for suggesting that I go because really is kind of the underpinnings now of the things that, that we're doing when we talk about alignment. We're truly doing it. So anyway, that was one of the fun things that I did. And it was more fun than watching grass grow. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Viall. The first thing that I want to do is make sure that you're all aware that there's a Tacoma Stars game on March 4th at 6:00 PM. And all of the proceeds from that game are going to Tacoma's elementary sports program. Please, please attend. It'll be a great time with kids and family. And that we're talking about funding elementary sports programs is phenomenal. So let's keep it going, Tacoma. Where is, where is that?
At the Showware Center in Kent. And you can, there'll be a social media campaign coming out so that you can buy tickets. So the proceeds go to the appropriate place. And so you can check Facebook and Twitter. And the money goes to supporting the kids in, in the program so they can play sports for.
And we have, get a lot of elementary, a lot of the elementary soccer teams come out. So they're fun, too.
Oh, great.
To watch.
So they kind of play at halftime?
No, they just kind of do a little parade around the, the side and kick the ball. And they usually get one player who, you know, kicks out the beginning ball. So that's fun.
Very cool. I think Director Cobb has a question.
I'm sorry, I forgot. I did have one question on my list. In response to a public comment earlier, the, the policy of breakfast after the bell was raised. I know that there are different challenges and opportunities with regard to implementing a program like that. So just from my own knowledge, I was just wondering if there's any way from our nutrition staff or just someone to provide just a little bit of background on some of what goes into that? Because I know that there is some movement around breakfast after the bell. And it would just be great to have a little bit more background in our own district about the challenges or opportunities related to doing.
So I don't know. I haven't looked specifically at the bell, at the bill. At the bill, I am worried that people are thinking that we're not providing breakfast to students after the bell rings. That's not true. They, you know, our students that have transportation have access to breakfast. So I don't know if you have any more information, but I know that some of the information about it is not accurate for Tacoma, anyway.
We can get you an update of where the status is through our nutrition. But I believe it was around the PTA's advocacy about advancing the breakfast after the bill, which we would be supportive of.
Breakfast for everyone.
Yeah. And I understood that. I just, I wanted to, given that.
We can, we can give you an update of where it's happening.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any challenges. But if there are folks that are struggling with that, then we want to know that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. And I just have a couple of things to sort of underline. First of all, I want to underline that we have some really top-notch sports events at Lincoln High School and phenomenal players and coaches. And the community that's surrounding them is intensely involved. So I just wanted to give a shout out for Lincoln under the circumstances, because I don't want to restate what's been said. The Parks event, thank you very much for your acknowledgement, Director Heinz. And thank you very much, those of you that were able to join me and Parks across the city. There are about 500 people here. What's exciting to me again is that it's another evidence of partnerships between municipalities to come to the best outcome for taxpayers. On TPS's end, just briefly, for those of you that might not recall, this is the project of creating a community center on the First Creek property. The TPS end of it is the land swap between TPS and Sammy. Things that in most, most municipalities aren't even conversations, because everybody has their own regulations regarding, you know, land and time and staff and creativity, and how do you get it done? And citywide, people have rolled up their sleeves and gotten it done. And it's truly an iconic project, I think, nationwide. So thank you to everybody that's worked on that across the district, across the city, because it's, it's important to families and kids. Stewart is amazing. We had an opportunity to do a board tour of Stewart. I've been promising to share photos on several neighborhood groups, and I haven't had the time to sit down at my computer, quite frankly. I, I can tell you already from the, just the neighbors that I've run into, that I've shown images on my phone, and some students that are Stewart students that are very excited. A few basketball players, for instance, that are a little bit disappointed that they won't have a longer season in the new building. They are, I raised their anticipation, and they can't wait to get inside of the building. So that's good news to share. And I'm grateful for that as well. Other than that, I don't have any further report. So I am going to move on to the announcement of-
Director, could I just make one comment?
Director Viall.
I'd like to thank Mr. Gilbert, who used to work for colleague of Ms. Cufazos, and that went into the teaching, for his kids and all the nice little letters we have thanking us from Stewart, which we're going to miss in our neighborhood. They've been up in my hood for the last 16, 17 months at heart. And it's been fun to see kids around, up there. So thank you. And we really appreciate that. And just to echo what you said about Lincoln, you know, it really bothers me when people make disparaging remarks about any of our schools, because all of our schools work so hard. And I think Lincoln is far from a rat hole and is to-
Don't repeat it.
Which was the, no, it makes me angry. And, you know, it does, because of all the great athletes and people that have come out of Lincoln. I mean, my dad was a College de Cathlon champion, and he was a 1926 grad of Lincoln and competed. And, you know, there's been a long history there. And that track is not in bad shape. I've been over to track meets. So I, I think I'm like with Superintendent Santorino, I think it's a matter of, of people coming together and saying, look, let's really do this for the kids. And the kids are going to love being at Lincoln, just as it's that, having people watching you and yelling and all that, then it's more having the event than worrying about where the venue is. But I, I would ask people that when they come before the board, that, you know, our school district and our schools, we're a big family. And I hope that we remember that we are, and that each and every one of our kids and our venues and what we do are just as important as where our kids go to school or have gone to school. So I'd just ask people that when they come to not disparage any of our kids or our schools, because everybody I know in Tacoma Public Schools is valued and works hard. So that's just my little soapbox for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that most of us or all of us would second the concept that respect is always the best first policy in any situation. And that is a wonderful way to come to the announcement of future board meetings. On February 7th, pardon me, on Saturday, February 25th, the board will have a work-study retreat from 8:00 AM to approximately noon, maybe a little bit earlier. My fingers are a bit crossed, at Wainwright Intermediate School on the third floor at 130 Alameda Avenue. In March, we will have a regular business meeting on March 9th, a study session on family engagement on March 16th, and a regular business meeting on March 23rd. Is there an executive session? There's no executive session. And so, since this is a regularly scheduled meeting of our business, at this point, I will ask, is there any further business? Is there any further business? Seeing no further business, I therefore declare this meeting adjourned.